Good evening. It's 6:00 PM and we welcome you to the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission, our regular meeting held on Thursday, October 17th, 2024. And with that, Maricela, would you please do roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Woolley will not be here tonight. Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair DeRosa?
Present.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. If you could please stand, our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Commissioner Pro.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin this evening with a call to the public. A call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone here in attendance this evening that would like to address the commission? Okay, I see one person attending digitally, but I don't see a hand raised. If you would like to address this, if you could just please raise your hand so let us know. Okay, not seeing anything, I will close the call to public. Next item for business is approving meeting minutes from two meetings, a special meeting held September 26th and the regular meeting held on October 3rd. So commission members, if you would please, concerns, comments for the special meeting held on September 26th, and then we'll do separately the regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, other than a, other than a word spelt wrong, I'll move to approve and I'll get with Mari to make the change.
I have one spelling correction that should be made. That would be on page three of five, the fourth paragraph from the bottom. Mr. Keeler stated that median breaks, that should be R-B-R-E-A-K-S.
That was what I was going to point out to her.
Okay.
It's in there twice.
Okay. That was all that I saw. So do we have a motion, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the special meeting minutes for September 26th from Vice Chair DeRosa and a second by Commissioner Lehman. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, I think you have four ayes up here, Maricela. Okay, regular meeting minutes from October 3rd.
Move to approve the minutes of October 3rd.
I have one other correction too. I think that we probably better talk about.
I didn't see any corrections.
That's on the top of page two. The sentence that begins in there says, "She stated that the site has one entrance-only access point and one exit-only access point." And I believe that north entrance is entrance and exit, and the south entrance is exit only. But this would indicate that it's just an entrance only on the north. So that probably needs to be corrected. And then the last sentence in that paragraph, "She stated that overnight stays will not be prohibited." That means, I think that not needs to be struck because they will be prohibited. And with that, with those corrections, I will accept that motion from.
So, Mr. Chairman, I had made a friendly amendment, which was denied, and I agreed to it. Should that be mentioned in the minutes?
That's a good question. Yeah, that was not mentioned there.
No, it's not mentioned in the minutes at all.
We can add that then?
Yes, please.
Okay. Great. So with, does your motion include those corrections?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval with the corrections and the addition from Vice Chair DeRosa. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a second from Commissioner Pro. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we have four ayes up here, Maricela. Okay, new business. Presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval, disapproval, or approval with condition for a conditional use permit for an increased height for a new wireless communications monopole located at 4201 West Merrill Ranch Parkway. Maricela, are you doing the staff presentation on this one?
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission, tonight we have a conditional use permit, or CUP, for a increase in height, or a request to increase height for a wireless cell tower monopole out in the Anthem Mail Ranch area. Specific address being 4201 West Merrill Ranch Parkway, APN 21101010A. This conditional use permit is requested per the code. Within Anthem, it's sitting in a zone that's for single-family residential R1, and the site itself is 677.79 acres. That's because it's the entire, the entirety of the parcel hasn't been broken up yet into plats. It hasn't been platted, so it's just one large parcel right now. But it excludes that little square, because that is the APS substation right there. So to give a better graphic, you have your Anthem at Merrill Ranch community, and then further out on Merrill Ranch Parkway past Felix Road and the railroad tracks, you have this little pin that shows where that monopole will be, and it's outside the substation, it's not within, it's right next to it. And then this is just another photo to show, coming in from Merrill Ranch, you get an access easement, and then you have the site which is starred, right next to the APS substation. So when conditional use permits come to staff, we review this for a couple of things other than your basic, make sure the use is good. The site of the proposed use and surrounding land uses, we make sure that those are compatible in a way, and we also make sure that there's access to the site, and that the impact on the surrounding properties isn't completely negative and out of place. These are also things that the planning commission should also consider when looking at this. This is not a design review. We are just looking at the allowing for that increase in height. Now, just to show that this isn't some, something we created, here's the section in the code, Chapter 150.183, for new freestanding monopoles or camouflage stealth towers that, they can be located in all zoning districts. So even though it's zoned for R1 within a PUD, it is allowed to be within theirs based on our town code and the planned unit development for Anthem. However, if they are subject to height limitations, and if there is an express need to change that, then it needs to be approved by conditional use permit, which is final action goes to town council. And where there's that height maximum is in this letter G, where it shall not exceed a maximum of 50 feet in height. So looking at 75, so they needed the conditional use Looking at the surrounding uses for this site, it's all vacant land at this point within the Anthem Merrill Ranch PUD. It's eventually going to be single-family homes or residential homes in general, but at this time, everything's vacant except for what's next door with the APS substation. The site will include a 50-foot by 50-foot CMU wall that surrounds that monopole. The site itself is 2,500 square feet, but that's all that's taken up from that larger 677. There's that existing APS adjacent to it, so it's not out of place. It's next to a utility substation. It's also next to a bunch of other electrical poles that are connecting to that substation that are going to be taller or close to the same height as this pole. The site will have one point of vehicular access, which is given through APS, and that's how APS gets to their substation. And this facility will be unmanned except maybe for maintenance after construction, of course, one or twice per month. And their access to the project is not for the public, it's only for authorized personnel. Public participation with this conditional use permit, per our code and per state statute, we ask the applicant that they are required to send out that letter within 300 feet of the site. The neighborhood meeting didn't need to take place, and that neighborhood meeting was on September 17th, is at 6:00 PM at the community center at 778 North Main Street. A letter of notice was also sent out for this public hearing, and that was 15 days ahead, also within 300 feet. No members of the public came to the neighborhood meeting. I understand, based on some of the comments, it's because of that notification radius is pretty low to reach any of the homes, which the nearest home is about 3,300 and something feet away from this site. And we are working on updating those notification guidelines at this time in our ordinance. We did get four members of the public email us comments. Those were provided to you commissioners and also the applicant ahead of time, so they could be addressed. The comments stated that they were not against this wireless communication facility. They think it'll help with the poor signal out there. They were concerned with the visual aesthetics, and of course, just that increased height with that one with the aesthetic. Some comments asked for some form of camouflage. Terms of recommendation, staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit with listed conditions in the staff report. The proposal meets the community development code in requiring that CUP, and it also meets the Anthem PUD. It is located next to an existing utility area. It has access from Merrill Ranch Parkway, and it also increases the service to the area, especially since this will be developed in the future and there'll be greater demand in that area. So we see that as a positive impact for those who are currently residing and for those in the future. Before I get to the whole Planning and Zoning Commission forwarding a recommendation, I will have the applicants come in and give a little bit more detail or share what they
And if you would please give us your name and affiliation for the record.
Of course. Good evening, Chairman Frost, Vice Chair DeRosa, commission members and staff. For your record, my name is Todd Daust. I'm with CommScapes. I'm here on behalf of AnthemNet Infrastructure and Verizon Wireless to present our request for the additional height increase to a proposed 50-foot pole located adjacent to the APS substation at 4201 Merrill Ranch Parkway. First and foremost, before I go through this brief deck, I'd like to thank you for the time to present, and I'd like to thank staff for their staff report this evening. AnthemNet is a wireless infrastructure provider to the wireless industry. Simply put, they're tower developers that develop cell sites and then lease vertical space to wireless carriers. The notion being that wireless carriers aren't necessarily interested in investing capital for infrastructure, and they're even less interested in maintaining it once it's, once it's constructed. AnthemNet specializes in working with developers in installing and implementing wireless infrastructure within master planning communities, and that's what's brought us to work with Pulte for the Merrill Ranch community. In looking at the needs of the community with our anchor tenant Verizon Wireless, we obviously look at existing vertical elements that are in place and where other carriers are transmitting and receiving from, also analyzing not only their spectrum portfolio, but that very spectrum that they operate on to analyze their coverage capabilities so we can make sure that sites that we're developing are going to be of use to not only our anchor tenant, but those tenants in the future. One of the things that AnthemNet specializes in bringing together parties, and that being the developers, homeowners associations, wireless carriers, government entities, and end users, residents in the area, recognizing the need for improved connectivity, especially in rapidly growing communities. The arrow you're seeing here before you illustrates the existing verticality that is currently in the area. Sort of southwest of the Merrill Ranch community, there's a large monopole that supports three active carriers on that structure. Within the community, at the elementary school or ballpark, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T are currently located on light standards, and each of them operating their own light standard. As you can see from the aerial, our proposed site is located on the eastern edge of the Merrill Ranch community that's going to help fill in some of that eastern, more eastern part of not only the existing community, but the community that's anticipated to be developed in the coming years. As I talked about earlier, the coverage and capacity is limited for all carriers due to lack of cell site density in the community and the rapid growth. There's a limited number of existing sites, as I've just pointed out on the previous slide, and the proposed AnthemNet design is part of a more comprehensive design to meet current and future needs of the Merrill In terms of site attributes, the site's actually located within a very much larger parcel. As staff have pointed out, our proposed 75-foot tower is to be placed in a 50-by-50 compound designed for multiple carriers, and it's located adjacent to the APS substation. The perimeter wall will be designed to mimic the existing APS substation wall, so it looks as if it's part of that facility. In looking at site selection with Pulte, we came to the conclusion that our proposed use is consistent with the adjacent passive substation use. We also took advantage of the existing railroad right-of-way to the east to create additional setback. And we also considered the existing vertical elements coming in and out of the substation with the transmission poles ranging from 70 to 175 feet. The poles of that height will help to mitigate the visual impact of our proposed pole. As it currently stands, our proposed site offers ample setbacks from surrounding properties. We realize this is subject to change, but Pulte has taken our proposed site into consideration with our overall concept for that phase of the community that's been submitted to staff. The next slide is a photo simulation of what the site will look like once installed, and you can kind of look at how the proposed pole will look in relation to the pole at left. That pole at left has a surveyed height of 70 feet. The poles to the east of that along the Copper Basin railroad right-of-way, again, range in height, but with some as high as 170 feet in height. That's a proposed, a photo simulation of what the proposed site will look like once I'd like for a moment, if I could, to address some of the comments. We're submitted to you by email, and then I'd be more than happy to take any questions you might have. The email on October 14th talked about a couple of things. In fact, it shared something in comment with the other emails that were sent on the 15th, and that was the notion of camouflaging the site. As I mentioned in the, in the presentation, when working with Pulte to determine a location for this proposed site, we took into consideration the land use that is occurring at the substation as well as immediately around it. And we also, again, considered the presence of the existing girded calbe and its impact on mitigating the appearance of our proposed 75-foot pole. There were some suggestions that we stealth the site or camouflage the site using a palm tree application or some other type of application. We didn't consider a monopole to be an appropriate method or other means of camouflaging from a vegetated perspective to be appropriate due to the lack of any mature vegetation in the area. There's literally creosote bushes out there, and as of yet, there isn't really any adopted landscape scheme that we could utilize to come up with a stealth application for our proposed site. The email on October 14th also mentioned home values, and with respect to home values, note that if approved, that the facility will be developed before any of the homes are developed in this phase of Merrill Ranch. Perspective future buyers can make a decision if they would like to live near a cell tower, which may be a moot point given the prominence of the existing substation and the existing transmission poles coming in and out of that The comments that were delivered by email on October 15th talked about the town requirements for notification. We did notice the adjacent residents per town code, so residents within 300 feet of the proposed, of the property for that matter, were noticed of the neighborhood meeting and were noticed of tonight's meeting. With that, I'd like to open up for any questions that the commission may have.
Commission members?
I just, I just, I think it's, I'm not opposed to it at all. I'm just curious to know what the timeline is for, you know, for producer, create, setting it, setting it up.
Chairman Frost, Commissioner, pardon me, Pro, Pro. One of the challenges that we run into, and I don't want to get too technical, cell sites aren't developed on a speculative basis. Carriers monitor the sectors or the faces of their antennas through their network operations center, so they can kind of look at trends in usage and can identify when a sector's going to break, so to speak, or reach capacity and not be able to support the usage of that site. And when a site reaches capacity, you're going to have issues such as drop calls, poor call quality, poor upload, poor download. And it kind of puts us in a position of having our backs against the wall. So a short answer to your question is, if approved, we're going to, and obviously have to go through town council ratification, we're going to aggressively pursue our building permit and move as quickly as we can to meet the needs of customers in this area. And it's one of the challenges that we deal with, the growth that we see, not only in Florence, but, you know, in our state with the amount of growth that's occurring. There are people that are moving in so quickly that it very quickly overloads the system, and we're in a pretty nasty game of catch-up to address that demand.
Thanks. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Mr. Daust, Verizon has a significant challenge out here, and I think if you talk to homeowners, you'll find that a lot of them have to have boosters in their home in order to attain your cell signal. So where is the site that you're looking to reach, that you'd need to have this tower 75 feet? I don't see anything out there that you're looking to communicate with. Is it two miles away, two and a half miles away?
Chairman Frost, Vice Chair DeRosa, if you look down at a wireless network, it, in the simplest of terms, it kind of looks like a honeycomb, a regularly shaped honeycomb, with each cell site basically having a service area or a service radius. And that service area or that service radius will fluctuate depending on times of uses. So anecdotally speaking, do you have everybody familiar with what a CB radio is? In the CB radio world, you have 40 channels to utilize. In a wireless world, that's really only 20 channels, and that's 20 channels to transmit and 20 channels to receive, or 20 channels to upload, or 20 channels to download. And now that's an oversimplification, but that cell site is limited in the amount of bandwidth that transmits and receives, but it does serve a certain service area, and then it works in concert with its neighbors to come up with a consistent service area. What happens when a site reaches capacity is, the network is gauging the power from your phone, the uplink power of your phone. When it reaches capacity, those people that are closest to the cell site are going to get the best service. Those that are out the fringe of the cell site where it runs out of channels to be able to support your call or your data, those are, those are the ones that suffer the, the, the poor service. So this site is a standalone site. It's got its own set of frequencies, and cellular by nature reuses frequencies. So its neighbor, from Verizon's perspective, is the large tower that I referenced in the, in the initial presentation that is located south southwest of the Merrill Ranch community.
So how is T-Mobile and AT&amp;T able to hang on the light towers in the park, in Anthem Park, park side, and Verizon can't?
Chairman Frost, Vice Chair DeRosa, Verizon has a different portfolio spectrum. They have spectrum that ranges from 700 megahertz to 3,500 megahertz. All carriers have different spectrum portfolios they transmit from. They also have different legacy sites that they operate from. So as a result, they will have different needs in different areas. It depends on the number of customers in the area. If Verizon has a large number of customers within the Merrill Ranch community, they're probably going to have, you know, greater demand for sites within that community because they have a greater market share.
But they're hanging on 50-foot poles, or you want a 75-foot pole?
Correct. That's what Verizon's engineers have asked me to acquire and entitle.
How can AT&amp;T and T-Mobile hang on a 50-foot pole when you need a 75-foot pole?
I would have to ask Verizon, or excuse me, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, how they do that.
Thank you. And you also list in here that the proposed structure is going to be near the Merrill Community Center. What community center are you referring to?
Listed in the presentation.
I'm looking at a, I'm looking at a part of my staff report.
Okay. Yes, we have had discussions with the Merrill, Sun City Homeowners Association about the placement of a camouflage bell tower at the community center to support the heart of the community. We're in very early discussions with them. That is a site that is also part of the master plan with Pulte to provide connectivity for the Merrill Ranch community.
So that is the current Merrill Ranch facility, not, not the proposed one?
That is an additional facility that we're talking to the homeowners association about.
Commissioner DeRosa, I can probably help you a little bit. I've already talked to Jenny, who's our general manager for the facilities, and she has been notified about putting one of these towers near the putting green.
Yes, I know. I've seen the pictures.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't know if that's what he was referring to, if he was referring to the new plat that Merrill Ranch has coming forward soon.
They keep telling us they're not going to put another center on the other side of Felix, so.
How many ta, how many sites, how many cells can your pole hold to have other carriers on it?
The proposed, excuse me, Chairman Frost, Vice Chair DeRosa, the proposed site will be designed to hold up to four carriers, recognizing there are three that are very active in your community right now, including AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. We're designing it for an anticipated fourth carrier, should that carrier have interest in deploying at the site.
And just a point of curiosity, having to, having driven here this evening, I happened to notice a tower, a cell site, over by the ICE facility. Do you know who owns that one? And it's got to be at least 75 feet.
Chairman Frost, Vice Chair DeRosa, I'm not familiar with that site.
Super, thank you.
I'm happy to look into it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Daust, I'll say upfront, I'm going to vote to approve this, so don't take any. Mr. Drouse, I'll say upfront, I'm going to vote to approve this, so don't take anything that I comment on in the wrong way. One, the access to this will be by the dirt road until we actually develop the east of Felix with Pulte, or whoever does that. The 300-foot notice, I think the town council definitely needs to get our new proposal done so we can get the homeowners aware of this. It only went out through neighbors. I know that, I assume that Pulte, that APS, and probably Eldorado got notices. Is that correct? Okay. Otherwise, the coyotes and the rattlesnakes don't need them.
Sure.
Now, in here, you say this could be Verizon, they have three antennas on each of three sides at the top of the pole. You can then add more of those types of antennas down the monopole? Is that correct?
Chairman Frost, Commissioner Lehman, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And that could happen. So, let's see. Is, I know you want to say that the walls around this monopole should match APSs, but, you know, we would like some variety out there. I think one of the problems we have with our area of Anthem and Parkside is that all the walls look alike. You know, we could use some variety, so you might oppose, you know, propose that with Pulte and APS and see what you can do to kind of improve that. One of the things we have seen in some new developers is they angle the walls to give it a little bit more variety than a square that we have plopped something down inside of. And I understand through the, I'll make sure I say this the right way, maybe I shouldn't, that the Federal Telecommunications Act gives us very little as local governments, any authority to ask for anything, but I definitely would like to ask for the faux palms put on this, at least at the top, would be nice. We do have a lot of palm trees over in Anthem. You can come over and see my neighborhood, and we have eight that leads into our area of Legends. And there's a whole bunch at the entrance to Sun City as well. So I think it would go well with the future, whatever future plantings that we have when Pulte develops that area. So make that request or suggestion. I think, one last question I have, is the access road off of Merrill Ranch Parkway, the extension of it, is that going to be paved, or is that still going to be dirt, or is it going to be gravel?
Chairman Frost, Commissioner Lehman, access road to extend south from Merrill Ranch Parkway to our proposed facility.
Okay, so Merrill Ranch Parkway will still be a dirt road?
Correct.
Okay, until it's developed?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll surface it in the same manner that the access road of the substation is surfaced.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Can you scroll back to the slide where it shows the depiction of the monopole in place? Let me see here. Yeah, now, and I know there's a little bit of a perspective problem here because they're not right against each other, but it looks much larger than the 70-foot 69 KV line that you reference, or pole that you referenced there.
Chairman Frost, looking at it, it does look a little bit out of scale, but I'd rather have it look bigger than smaller for purposes of this presentation.
So you, and I agree, there is nothing out there to try to match to currently, but looking down the road, if the town's able to get Pulte to come in there and put some palm trees in to break this up and build a buffer, would you be willing at that point in time to go in and camouflage this, stealth this area as changes are made to it? I wouldn't, when you start adding additional antennas, would you consider doing stealth controls then?
Chairman Frost, it's extremely difficult to make a site stealth after it's been built, because you have to clad the structure itself, the monopole shaft, with the faux bark material. You have to weld receivers into the pole that support the fronds. So it's very difficult to go in afterwards and make a monopole site, a stealth site. We can look at it, what I would suggest, if the palm tree application is something you'd like to look at, perhaps working with staff on some photo sims of what that would look like, the challenges you run into with mono palms is, they do not support co-location. They do great for the first tenant on the tower, but it's very difficult to camouflage the second and the third carrier on the structure.
Okay. I'm kind of reading between the lines here, and you didn't say it, but you said you're going to support three additional carriers on there.
Correct.
By giving us, by giving the additional 25 feet of height, does that give you greater reach, so we'll have less requests for poles later in the community?
That's our intention, yes.
Awesome, so.
Yeah, simply put, we want to capitalize on the use of this site and the existing verticality, so that we wouldn't need to ask for that type of verticality at less appropriate locations.
Okay, very good. Let me look through here. I'm 100% in agreement with this. We drop calls all the time at our home, and we're with Verizon, so I think for safety and other things and convenience, this is a very, very needed service in this part of our community.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add, by adding palm fronds to this, introduces a whole new set of challenges, especially with the monsoons we have here and the heavy winds. I come from an area where they had heavy winds, and we had requirements for the cell sites to be stealthed, and obviously, the palm was the choice, coming from California. And I can share with you, after a few years, those palm fronds and the heavy winds don't hold up. While we don't have constant wind, we do have the monsoon winds, and they can be pretty brutal. And just adding vegetation around this just causes a whole set of other challenges, both for the cell site company, which is their problem, obviously, but also for the area and the people who will be living in the area to maintain it, who maintains it, how is it maintained, what do you want to see around it? There's just a whole other set of challenges that come up with this. So I'd be happy to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the cell site, but I also don't encourage that we ask to have a palm tree out there. I think at 75 feet, it would not be in our best interest. I think this will just kind of blend in with the poles that are out there, with the utility poles that are out there.
And does your recommended motion include?
Before you make a...
We have a public hearing.
Yes, before you make a motion, sorry.
Drive over that. Thank you for the reminder. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now do the public hearing. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak to this subject, this is a time to take your three minutes to come and speak to the commission. And if anyone listening in via digital, if you'd please just raise your hand so that we know that you'd like to speak as well. Anyone here in attendance this evening that would like to speak to this? Okay, we'll go online. If you would, again, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak to this. I don't see anyone with their hands raised, and so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And now, Vice Chair, you may make your motion.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the permit for increased height for the wireless communication monopole located at 4201 West Merrill Ranch Parkway, APN 211-01-010A.
This is a recommendation of approval to Town Council?
It is.
Okay.
With the conditions from staff?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion for approval with conditions and from Vice Chair DeRosa, and a second by Commissioner Pro. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have four ayes up here, Maricela. Okay.
Thank you.
Next agenda item. Presentation slash recommendation of approval or disapproval or approval with conditions of a design review for a non-lithium battery storage center known as Copper Crossing located on Addaway Road between Judd Road and Bella Vista Road. I am looking forward to hearing about this one. This sounds like innovative technology, so.
Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission, we have a design review for a non-lithium battery storage center for energy research. This is, the applicant was Pewin Lake, PLC, on behalf of their client, CM Blue, and Salt River Project, SRP. This is a design review. It is, this is located at Addaway Road between, on Addaway Road between Judd and Bella Vista. This is the northernmost part of the Town of Florence boundary, and it was, it's within a planned unit development. It originally was called Nevett Farms, but then an amendment to that PUD happened for the solar project site there, Aurora Solar Project, which is what this project is under in terms of PUDs. So just to give you a visual, this is most of our border, and we're, oh, go away, we're all the way up north where the star in circle is. And the site specific is where it is red outlined, but the whole parcel itself is what is outlined in blue. That is all within the Aurora Solar Project PUD. So this falls within it. The project itself is an accessory structure and facility necessary to support the current SRP renewable energy facilities that are out there, including the Abel Substation and the solar project that is next just to the north. The entrance to the facility will be off of Addaway Road. It'll be a private access, and there will be parking. Four parking spaces will be provided per the site, one spot being ADA. There doesn't, there will not be too many employees on site, it's going to be people who come and maintain or do certain testing from time to time. There won't be people there 24/7. The site will feature a hammerhead turnaround compliant with the International Fire Code. This was reviewed by our fire marshal, just to make sure that what was taking place is safe. They were even nice enough to look at future fire codes since they address more of these battery storage facilities and the safeties that go with it. The building itself will be 30 feet, and it's set back, or at least 25 feet from the fence and 50 feet from the front. There will be an eight-foot chain link fence surrounding the site, and there will be signage, but that, what you will see in the visuals are very conceptual, and that will be submitted to staff later just to have a review. So what you see here is actual text from the solar PUD. This is where we reviewed most of this project from. So letter D here, under what is permitted uses, the accessory structures and facilities necessary to support the current facilities that are there. And then you have your height standards. So for the maximum building height, you got 30, and it matches that 30. Next, we have our setbacks. Everything is set at 20 feet, and this succeeds the 20 feet by at least being 25 on all sides, including the rears and sides, and then the front is at 50. And parking standards are just, permanent parking was per town's approved site plan. Looking at their site plan and what they planned to have in terms of employees there, four seemed good enough. And then parking lot pavement, we worked with the town engineer to settle access, and that they don't need full street improvements on Addaway that seemed pretty, I don't want to say unfair, but just a little too much for what's going there and how many people will be using that road. If you're doing full improvements, that usually requires a lot of traffic road or traffic going through, and if there isn't, then that road will not stay maintained very long, and it'll break down faster because it's not being used. So we're working with the engineer. We have a condition within the staff report that specifically addresses it, that whatever roadway that that will be there must be approved per their engineer and with our engineer to make sure everything is settled, and that is before they move on to a building permit and before they get their CVO, it has to be in place. And then just down below, we have a fencing requirement that, in our code, in the town code, it asks for a block wall. However, within this PUD, it does say that a chain link fence is acceptable. So we went with this chain link fence per the PUD, and that's also out there with the solar facility, so we're keeping in line with what's there and what's required within the PUD. For recommendation, staff recommends approval of this design review application with the listed conditions in the staff report. The proposal meets the development requires listed within the Aurora Solar Project PUD. And tonight, Planning and Zoning Commission may vote to approve with the conditions or deny the design review for the application. I will bring up the applicant to give their short presentation as well, and then answer questions. There is no public hearing with this one because it is a design review, and our code does not require a public hearing with design reviews.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ralph Pugh. I'm the Pugh in the Pewin Lake application here. My partner, Reese Anderson, has been handling this issue with the town, with the staff. It's a pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Salt River Project and their partnership with CM Blue in this new innovative approach to battery storage of solar energy and other energy sources. I think the issue clearly in front of the commissioners tonight is the site plan through your design review process. Don't want to belabor everything that Ms. Beneathus has covered today very thoroughly, but it, we agree with the staff report, we agree with the findings, we agree with the three stipulations, especially we're cooperating with the staff, with the town, on the stipulation concerning access, and we will cooperate in that regard, depending on how it all evolves and is necessary. So I think the exciting part of this project, frankly, is to listen a little bit to what this is all about, because if you have site plan questions, we're happy to answer those, but as we, as the staff indicated, we comply with your standards and with your requirements, and it's an allowed use under the Aurora PUD that modified, the Nevett PAD from years earlier. So with us this evening is Mr. Chico Hunter, Ms. Sarah Prince from our office, our land planner. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can have Mr. Hunter take a minute and explain to you what this long-duration, non-lithium battery storage is. It's really cool, but I can't explain it. So if we could have someone that knows what they're doing take a minute, would that be okay with you, to hear what it is?
That would be great, thank you.
Let's do that. Chico, would you?
That'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, Chairman Frost and Vice Commissioner DeRosa. My name is Chico Hunter. I work with Salt River Project, and I manage their research and development group, and my team at SRP is the one, is the team that's leading this effort within SRP. Can I click forward? So this first slide here really just is a little bit of a reiteration of what Maricela has already covered on where this is located. This site is owned by SRP.
Could I ask you to pause for one second? I'm sorry. Can you point out on that photo which property is loan, is owned by SRP in totality? Because I know you just built on the east side of Addaway a generation facility for peaking.
Yes, yes. So if you can see my mouse, so SRP owns the east side of Addaway, which is actually Pennell County. The gas plant that we've just constructed is over here. So we own this whole kind of trapezoidal shape on the east side of Addaway. We own everything on the west side of Addaway over to where the homes are. So we own where the existing solar is, we own all the way down to Rudd, or Judd, and over to, I believe this is, can't remember what road this is on that, on the east side, but.
Quail Run, I think.
Quail Road, yeah, Quail Road. We do not own this little section where there's a home here, that's the Nevett Farm.
Nevett's, yep.
Yeah, the Nevett's, but we own the rest of the site.
Mr. Chairman, could Mr. Hunter point out where the peaker plants are? You have three peaker plants out there?
We have two gas turbines. They are roughly where you see the arrow is, they're there now.
Isn't that the new gas facility you put in? But I know when I come down Addaway, before I turn on to Judd, you've got peaker plants. Are they your peaker plants out there?
Yes, yes, those are owned by SRP.
Okay, so whereabouts are they in relationship to, you're telling me it's in that black area?
Yeah, so the peaker plants are roughly where the mouse cursor is now. And then the battery facility is going to be on the west side of Addaway, which is Town of Florence.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me interrupt you and for that clarification.
No, no problem, certainly happy to answer questions. So this is a site SRP's owned for a while, this land. We put this solar farm, the original solar farm, back in, I think, 2011 or 2012. We are now developing... We are now developing the rest of the site. We've put the gas turbines in on the east side. We plan to fill in the rest of the west side with solar, except where the batteries are going, where we're adding these batteries. This is probably a bit wordy to read, but I'll, I'll just kind of describe a little bit about what we're doing with this particular project. So for those of you that may not be familiar with SRP, we are a not-for-profit public utility. We serve just roughly half of Metro Phoenix. This site is within our service territory. We do not serve the rest of the Town of Florence. Most of the Town of Florence, I believe, is served by APS. And we have set carbon goals for ourselves, sustainability goals. We are adding a lot of solar to our system to meet these goals. Obviously with solar, you have a challenge where it works great in Arizona during the day, but not so well at night. And so it's really important to pair solar energy with storage. And today, most utilities are, including SRP, are installing lithium ion battery systems, typically shorter durations, about four hours in duration is what people are installing today. We anticipate the need to have longer duration storage that's needed probably in the 2030 timeframe, 2030s, where we're going to need energy storage that can run all night long, closer to 10 to 12 hours in duration. Storage that can run from sundown to sunrise essentially. And lithium ion batteries are not well suited to that type of application because it becomes very expensive to do 10 hours with lithium ion. You can do it, but it's expensive. And so SRP is very interested in understanding what are the other types of technologies out there and how do they perform in our climate? Because we have a rather challenging climate here in Arizona. And so we issued a request for proposal several years ago, soliciting proposals from emerging battery technology companies that could supply batteries that could last for 10 hours. And we've got a number of good proposals and we selected a technology from a company called CM Blue. They're based in Germany and they have a type of battery that they call a solid flow battery. It is very interesting chemistry in that it doesn't use any metals. And so there are no critical metals required in the manufacturing of the batteries and the electrolyte that it uses is a water-based electrolyte. And so it's non-flammable and the, all the materials in the battery are fully recyclable. And so it has a lot of very interesting properties. The performance claims that they have are, are good, not, maybe not quite as good as lithium ion, but pretty close. And so we are very eager to test and try this technology. And this particular site, we intentionally set aside a portion of the site to allow testing of emerging battery technologies. And this is our first pilot that we're going to be putting there. We selected this project about a year ago. We hope to have it online by the end of 2025. And so this is, this process of getting the site plan approval is the, kind of the first step towards getting that project developed. This slide here is a little bit of a rendering from CM Blue that they provided us of what the facility will look like. One of the nice things about this type of technology is that it can go inside a building. Today lithium ion batteries, because of the fire concerns, they don't like to put them inside a building, so they're typically containerized. So it looks like a field of containers when you do a lithium ion battery farm. This is a technology because it's water-based, it's not flammable, you can put it inside of a building and so it's, it's not, it's less aesthetically of an issue in terms of, you know, a building is, looks better than a field of containers. And so this is, the batteries themselves will be stored in essentially what are very similar to pallet racking inside the building. And there'll be two buildings on site and this is roughly the scale of the buildings. The site itself is a little over three acres where this project is going to be situated. Here's the site plan that we submitted to the Town of Florence for review and have been working with town staff to, to have it, you know, make sure it meets all the requirements for the, for the town. You can see the access road will come off of Addaway along the north side of the site and then there'll be a turn into the site and the access, the gate into the site will be from the north side of the, the battery site. And then the two rectangles there represent the two buildings that were shown in the depiction. It'll be a pretty simple site in terms of two buildings, some, there'll be a tank for water for, for fire protection and parking lot and then air conditioners and, you know, transformers between the two buildings that are shown there in the smaller squares. And the chain link fence, as was mentioned, the solar facility that's just to the north of this, the existing solar facility has a chain link fence. And so this will be consistent with that. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commission members, any questions?
Pretty interesting, pretty exciting.
I just have a question about the maintenance yard. What do you intend to keep in the maintenance yard, trucks or?
The maintenance facility that, so this is, facility is actually going to be owned by CM Blue. So they, they are going to be owning and operating the battery facility. And I believe in the maintenance facility, they may have some spare batteries and maybe some test equipment. I don't expect there to be a lot of, need for a lot of equipment because.
Is there any way we can camouflage the chain link fence? I would prefer a block wall actually, but if there's a chain link fence, is there some way we can camouflage that chain link fence?
That is something we can discuss with town staff?
Yeah, it is something.
That's okay.
I'd, I'd like to see the chain link fence camouflaged somehow.
We can look at alternate materials. The one thing that we don't advocate for is slats across chain links.
No, I absolutely agree.
Because those break with the harsh sun and heat.
Yes, I, I agree with that, not a problem. If there's some way we can camouflage the, not knowing what's going to be in that yard, not knowing what's, people are going to see, I'd like to see, like I said, I personally would like to see a block wall, but I, I get the expense. So if we can camouflage the wall somehow.
We can look at different materials that are not slats.
Maybe one clarification just before we get too far, this might answer some of those questions. Will Addaway be a through street?
I guess I will defer to town staff on that.
I'll go. Yes, good question. That was, so this matter has been presented to the Technical Advisor Committee on Tuaque. And that question was the topic of much of those conversations. There's a lot to consider, right? Years ago, when you look at that area, the Nevett Farm PUD passed transportation plans for that area, the world's a different place. Is, as Chico mentioned earlier, SRP owns that whole area. It's a utility area. They have, they have things they need to consider and I know staff, when we were discussing that at the Technical Advisory Committee, we also had some questions. May there be a future where it makes sense for Addaway to be a through street? Maybe. But in the short term, with SRP's ownership, understanding that's a utility area, understanding the sensitive, sensitive nature of security and things like that, that's really how we led to the third condition that's included in the staff report, is that the town, through the Technical Advisory Committee and consult with police and fire, engineering and all the, all the folks that are there and with the team representing this project, I think we all understood that we may need to take a, a hard look at what Addaway's future is north of Judd, is, in terms of public access and the public roadway, because a lot of the plans that we're relying on are historic in nature and really not, not honestly assessing what's, what's the state of affairs on the ground and the investment that, that SRP and some of their partners are making in that area.
Yeah, and I asked that question because that kind of gets to Vice Chair DeRosa's concern about just the aesthetic look of that, but if, if it's not going to be people going by, then it's just, it's a utility corridor with SRP on both sides.
Facing on Judd. At least camouflage facing on Judd.
They're a long ways away from Judd.
It turns, Addaway turns into Judd.
Oh, but this, this side is about a half mile north of Judd, right?
About a half mile north of Judd.
So it'll be that much further.
Yeah.
Now eventually when they.
The scale of this picture.
They'll be solar down there and then that's where your concern will come in, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things we talked with town staff about Commissioner Frost and Vice Commissioner DeRosa is that this site, because it's all owned by SRP and we are planning to install utility infrastructure along both sides of Addaway for the whole mile-long stretch.
Both sides of Addaway.
Yeah. So it will have utility infrastructure on both sides of Addaway, on the Pennell County side and the Florence side.
You have, you have the big substation out there already.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And you've just put in a boatload of big transmission towers. Nobody wants to share towers out there, so we have just towers on towers. It's just so fun to see. I've never seen so many transmission towers in my whole life. Okay. When, when do you anticipate the solar field production beginning?
The solar field installation is planned to be later in 2025, late '25. So about the same time as this battery facility will be going installed, the, the solar will be installed.
So Commissioner, I had this, I had this on the Judd side instead of on this side.
Oh, yeah. Easy to do.
So that was, that's where I.
Yeah. Yeah, it's roughly halfway between.
Okay, you're forgiven. I'll let it go this time.
As long as I was talking, I'll just keep talking a little bit. The, the facility that you're describing here is apparently some sort of a proven technology in Europe, but we're bringing it here to try to make sure that it works in, in this environment in, in our desert. So if it works, does the facility stay there or is this something that you would move someplace else? I mean, is this, is this truly a permanent facility or is this temporary in nature?
This project is planned as a 10-year project. So we have a, a 10-year contract with CM Blue. It is a utility scale in the sense that it's, it's five megawatts, but five megawatts for our system is really still pretty small. If this technology works well, the plan would be we would install it at a much larger scale elsewhere. So this is really just a, this portion of the site is set aside to do these smaller pilots.
I'm, I'm still impressed though that you can get ten, or five megawatts in a 10,000 square foot area. That's pretty impressive.
Yes, yeah. The, the density of this technology is pretty close to what you would see with lithium ion, which is, it, it's, it's got a, a lot of interesting properties and so we're really excited for the opportunity to test this technology.
Yeah, that's awesome. And getting back to my, my original question about Addaway, if Addaway doesn't go through, then I, I could see where this could be party central for a bunch of guys that want to go out and, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back to, to the, to the crazies that I hung around with in, in high school and, and any place that there was a nook like this where you could escape to, those guys would go there and, and party and trash the place. So hopefully we have some sort of, something built into this discussion too, that that doesn't become one of these holes that police are forever having to go down and.
Those were the, Chairman, those were the concerns raised at TAC. Those were, I, I believe the concerns even shared by SRP and their team. And, and those will be the discussions we have going forward because, you know, there's the safety and security measures, but there, there also is just the playing around and messing around. And all of us felt that, that working together collaboratively to, to resolve this matter would be in best interest of all the parties involved, police, the requirements of police, fires, public safety generally speaking, as well as the safety and security of the folks at SRP.
Good. Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. DeR, few questions. Besides the 30-foot buildings, you also have a 20-foot operations and maintenance building. That's where you're going to be storing your spares and all your equipment and forklift and things of that sort, is that correct?
I, I'm not exactly sure what CM Blue will be installing there, but I'm, I'm assuming because it is a rather small facility, it would be just some spares. The buildings themselves are large enough that the forklifts presumably would be in the 30-foot tall buildings because that's where they, they would be needed.
Okay. Well, I, you have an O and M facility there.
Yeah.
That's 24 by 60, I think, and it's 12 feet high. So that's kind of like offices and maintenance shops and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm assuming, because the site will be unmanned, the building is really going to be there for more, when there are people on site to do maintenance.
Understand.
A place to be air-conditioned and make phone calls or do, you know, office work and.
Sure.
Probably only a portion of that building would be actually storing spare parts.
So I, I guess tonight I found out that this fire suppression leach aid is actually a tank. How tall is it?
That has not been, the design of that's not been completed yet, but you would need to stay within the heights that's allowed within the PUD, which is 30 feet.
Okay. So 30 feet by, I could calculate the volume of how many gallons that is. The, this is in the Town of Florence and we do have a town code that says you cannot have barbed wire on your fence. So I heard that tonight and so you may have to reconsider that portion of your proposal.
Yes, Marcelo, you want?
So our town code does not allow for barbed wire, however this PUD does allow for barbed wire.
Only, only prisons are allowed to have barbed wire on top of fences in the town limits. So at least that's the way I read the code. So you'll have to check that out.
But the PUD does override that part. Because you make a PUD in order to accept yourself from rules within the town code.
Okay. So, so in instance, when the town council votes to approve this, they're approving to overload the code.
Well, this does not go to town council. Designer views only go through Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right. This whole area is to be drained to a temporary retention in there on the southwest area. You haven't sized that yet, I assume, for the whole drainage of the area?
Not yet. That'll be, that design work, Commissioner, will be completed during the design review process.
And I understand that, as you said today, it's a water-based with no metals in these batteries. So if one of these batteries fails and dumps onto, these will have concrete flooring inside the buildings?
Correct. The buildings will be designed to contain any spills.
Okay, they're, they're going to be curbed to contain that spill within the building.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And let's see here. You talk about utility lines here, we don't see any on any of the plot here. They'll be running up and down Addaway. And you say it'd be both on the town side as well as on the county side, is that correct?
So the battery, this battery site will be on the town side.
Understand, but to get to it and.
The, the power that'll be, the, the line that will serve this site is going to be underground.
All underground?
Yeah. There's existing transmission poles that are shown in the right of way just to the east of this building. Those are existing transmission lines that are run parallel to Addaway.
Yeah, I was out there the other day and looking at the site. So I wondered, part of the issue, if you go back to the, I don't know if it's Google Maps or whatever, it's so old that there have been two facilities installed along this primitive road of Addaway. I don't know if they're pigging stations or what for the natural gas lines, but they are there and I just, in this photo that you just put up there, how much of that red area is actually the containment of this facility?
Only a small portion. The red area is larger than the site that's proposed. I don't have the dimensions on the red site here, but let me go to the, the site plan. This particular site is 500 feet wide by 300 feet tall.
Commissioner, if I could answer that question for you, I'm not sure of the exact dimensions, but the outline in red was intended simply be a vicinity map to show you where the site plan for the project would be located, so it would be highlighted better.
Okay, I understand.
No dimensionality to it that meant anything.
I, I understand. That's why I asked the question is, I was trying to take the plot plan that you have and impose it on the, the Google map, I'll call it that, which is ancient because it doesn't show the new facilities at all, particularly the, the peaker plant that you've installed on the east side of, of Addaway there. That is a kind of a bumpy, primitive road out there, by the way, too.
It is a primitive road. It's labeled as a primitive road.
It goes all the way through. I, I hate to ask our town manager, but I'm sure, is that beet sea out there? Yeah, I believe so. Do they, do they patrol around that area on a regular basis as part of their, their beet? beet?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I don't think we have to worry about too many keggers going on out there, right? Okay. Uh, let's see, did I have any other questions? No, I guess that's right. Thank you for your information, I appreciate it.
Commissioners, anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah. This very exciting project that could have a very nice benefit to our environment and what's great is that Florence could be part, is going to be part of it.
Certainly, yes.
Is there a financial benefit to the Town of Florence?
This facility will be in the town jurisdiction, so there will be property taxes that are paid as part of this, I'm, I'm assuming that'll be, there aren't, there won't be any local, there'll be construction, some construction jobs, but that's, that's obviously just a short-term during the construction process. The site will be mostly unmanned. There may be maintenance staff that will be there several times a month or if there's issues. I'm not sure where those people will live.
It's an exciting project, so.
With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Take a motion?
If we can put a stipulation in there about getting rid of the barbed wire, which I don't want to override town code, I will move that we approve.
You said if we put a stipulation?
Yes. That we approve the, how do we title this? Design review for a non-lithium battery storage center known as Copper Crossing located Adaway Road between Judd Road and Bella Vista Road, APN 210 24 001P, PZ 2431.
I'd second that.
But I think that the question about the barbed wire is a, is a legal question and unfortunately the attorney's not here this evening to answer that question.
I would have to say, I don't know if it is a legal question, the P U D for this development or this area allows a barbed wire fence. That P U D has been approved by the town council, so the town council understands it is a permitted fence material in the P U D.
So that, so we are to understand that the barbed wire then is permitted and Commissioner Lehman would have to take that stipulation off?
It's permitted.
Okay, if they've already approved it, I have to live with what's been approved in the past. All right, I, I remove that portion from my motion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion for approval.
I'll second the motion.
By Commissioner Lehman and a second by Commissioner Pro for that approval.
That's right.
With conditions from staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You had four ayes up here. Applicants and Mr. Pugh, thank you very much, very good presentation, we'll look forward to that and hopefully you're going to do public tours and that gets going so that we can come and see that thing in operation, that'd be awesome.
I told you it would be a much better deal to listen to Mr. Hunter than to me and it was much, much better, so thank you for your, your time.
It's always better to listen to an engineer than an attorney, so.
Always better. I, I have a father-in-law for an engineer and I've learned that my entire life.
Thank you very much. Director's report.
There were a couple of things I'd like to mention and one, this was touched on earlier during the CUP presentation. As you know, we've been working together as commission and staff on developing a, recommended changes to the public notification requirements. Those staff recommendations have been forwarded to legal for review and as soon as that legal review is completed, we'll be back before you as a commission seeking a recommendation to forward those amendments to the town council for consideration in addition to the Town of Florence town code. The other thing I would like to mention and as Chairman Frost mentioned during last month's or last, our last meeting, is that we will be holding a, a joint work session on November 7th to talk about the P U D and transportation presentation.
Second or seventh?
Seventh.
I'm sorry, November 7th?
Seventh, okay.
Seventh, I'm sorry, thank you, seven, seventh. Thank you for that and so we are all looking forward to hearing that presentation, but I just wanted to bring that up again, Chairman, because I know you mentioned that last month and that is still on track. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Commission members, we'll move then to call to the commission, current events, anything?
Nothing here, no.
Vice Chair?
Just want to remind the public about Fright Night coming up. It's going to be a fun evening. It's always fun to see the children out in their costumes. We invite everybody to come down to Main Street and be a part of, of Fright Night. Oh, and Third Fridays are coming up too. Yeah, so those are always great evenings to.
Take that, okay.
And then we had, then Saturday, I always want to say Florence cares, but I know there's a more correct.
Makes it, make a difference day.
Make a difference day. This Saturday from 7 to 1 o'clock, so if you come and help out and make our community look a little better.
I don't have anything more, however, than said.
Okay, favorite motion?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lehman and a second by Commissioner Pro that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.